Good evening, welcome to our December fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight, there are three items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. Before we go to our first item, do we have some general public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who called that item?
First public comment comes from Ms. Laura Bentley.
Hi there. Laura Bentley, twenty-five hundred Bethany Church Road. Just a quick comment on, in general, changes to AG one standards. In my opinion, our AG one zoning is the crown jewel of our community. It's the basis for which Rob and I purchased our parcel of land. And I ask that you carefully consider changes and modifications to AG one. And just as a general example, I have nothing against assisted living. I happen to feel like it should be in commercial areas. So it makes me a little bit nervous when we start looking at special use permits for assisted living in AG one areas. It's not something that I ever considered when I carefully read the zoning when we purchased. So I know that tonight you'll hear, you'll hear the, some information about that. So Planning Commission made some recommendations, specifically what I remember is that it be owner operated with an acreage minimum. I ask that you uphold those recommendations because when I heard the discussion, I really do feel like they thought about all the different angles. And I believe that they had a very good and long and detailed discussion about it. So, thank you.
Okay. I might want to, that may not be just a general comment, but for item number one. Before we get started, I know we've got somebody to swear in, Richie, so I might want to do that, just if you guys are okay, to do that real quick, so you doesn't have to sit here for three hours. All right, if you guys will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of
That I will faithfully perform the duties of
The Comprehensive Planning Advisory Committee member
The Comprehensive Planning Advisory Committee member
Of the city
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Okay. Thank you guys for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any more public comment on this item?
That's all, sir.
Okay. If you'll please sound the first item.
Our first item this evening is discussion of ARZ fifteen twenty-six, to create a new use permit for alternative senior housing, section sixty-four, one-eight, four-four. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. By way of background on this item, staff has since the inception of the city in two thousand and six, has received numerous inquiries regarding the use of single-family homes to be used as personal care homes, which we are calling alternative housing for seniors. Currently, the zoning ordinance does not permit this type of use within the city. Staff presented the idea of establishing a new use permit to allow alternative housing for seniors at the September fourteenth council work session. At that time, the council directed staff to create a new use permit. Subsequent to that, staff did draft a permit and did present it to the Planning Commission at its November eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting. They did review our proposed draft, and they did have the following comments in regard to it. Number one, they requested that the owner be, the owner of the property be required to reside on the site. And I will mention that staff originally recommended this standard as well. However, the city attorney has advised us that this recommendation should not be included and made part of the ordinance. Number two, the staff, staff recommended a maximum of six residents be permitted, and that really ties to the licensing of the state for personal care homes, that the state license allows up to six. The Planning Commission, however, recommended no more than four people. Also now, again, the city attorney has recommended more than four people based on the fact that four unrelated people can reside in a single-family residence. And that goes to our definition of a family, where you can have up to four unrelated people. So his recommendation was that we already have that in place, and so he would prefer that we add to that number and enhance it. And we're recommending six. Third, staff did not require a minimum lot size, but included the zoning districts that allow a minimum lot size of eighteen thousand square feet or more. The Planning Commission, however, recommended a minimum of three acres in size. I will also mention that the reason that they did not, that they wanted the property owner to reside in the site was to alleviate the issue of it becoming a commercial use in a residential agricultural area. And they thought by having the owner reside there that that idea of a commercial use would not come into being. Whereas if there was no residency requirement, then someone could really, in essence, operate a business and own several of these across the city, which is what they were trying to alleviate. So that, in essence, you have before you, you should have a copy and read of the new proposed ordinance, and in it, it makes mention to the city attorney's comments as well as the proposed comments from the city council. I'm sorry, from the Planning Commission. And I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have on this.
Okay. And I may want to start out, just, you know, what kind of got this started even for discussion? We had a couple of folks, you know, bring this forward to us, and with the interest in, unlike an assisted living home or whatever, this would more, you know, in my impression, be more of a private cozy place for, you know, an alternative somebody. They wouldn't have to move into a more of a commercial-type facility. So I don't necessarily think the intent was to make this, you know, a big business thing, commercial project and residential, but more of a, you know, where somebody wanted to take care of a few folks or whatever, maybe, you know, their mother and some friends or something like that. So, anyway, just, so, so we'll open up comments or questions for Kathy.
Rick? I guess bridging off from what the mayor said, question is, the wording that's in here, does it prohibit or prohibit assisted living? And do we know the definition, the legal definition between assisted or the senior-type housing?
Yes, according to what we've got here, we define personal services includes but not limited to individual assistance with or supervision of self-administered medication. And that's a big issue, in that with assisted living, they do assist with the medication. And with personal care, it would be self-administered. So, and that's how the state, one of the difference, differences that the state uses to distinct, to distinguish between assisted living and personal care. So it's a low-level personal, low-level assisted living, I guess is the best way to say it. And they, the idea is that there would be assistance with ambulation and transfer and activities of daily living, such as eating, bathing, grooming, dressing, and toileting. And that's so really to help people with their personal assistance needs, but not the medication.
Okay. But it's not, but it's actually, it's not assisted living or
Correct.
Like nursing homes.
As defined by the state licensing, that is correct.
Bill?
Kathy, would you clarify the lot size, the minimum lot size? What's the basis for three acres?
That was the Planning Commission's recommendation, that it be three acres. Now, we did do an evaluation, which I've included in the staff memo, about what other communities, we are recommending eighteen thousand square feet or larger. Most other communities do, the ones who do allow it, which include Alpharetta, Athens, Clark County, Cherokee, and Gwinnett, do not differentiate in terms of size of lot. They just allow it in various zoning districts. We pick and chose the zoning districts we would allow it in, however, for us, in that we only chose those districts that allow structures eighteen thousand square feet or larger. So the single-family home lot has to be a minimum of eighteen thousand square feet. And only those zoning districts that allow eighteen thousand square feet or more are included in this.
Kathy, the title of the, the changes that we're talking about here includes the words "housing for seniors." Are we trying to differentiate the purpose of the establishment as being directed towards only people that are above a certain age? Because in my experience, a lot of these facilities are used for all ages. They could be used for people that would be termed seniors based on AARP's definition. So are we somehow trying to make sure that we're, we're looking at the age of the residents themselves? Or is that just makes the understanding of what we're trying to do simpler? I'm just trying to understand why we've got that wording in there.
Yeah, I see. Well, right now, the way it's written is that you must be fifty-five or older in order to access
So even though the facilities may be, you know, very similar in terms of their makeup and what they're trying to do and things like that, we're talking about the ones that are just four people over fifty-five?
That's correct.
Okay.
Why was it that the recommendation was made not to require the owner to live on the property?
That was from the city attorney.
That was the city attorney. So Ken, if, Robin, if you'll have
Paul Fricki, who had reviewed it. He had stated that even a person who owns a house can rent it out. They don't have to be owner-occupied, and it was inequitable that you would require that somebody in this use has to live there. Obviously, if they chose to, they could, but to make it a requirement
Yeah, but if they're getting a use permit, you know, it seems like they're, they're, we ought to be able to make them live there. If they don't want to live there, then they just don't get the use permit, so.
Well, the problem you get into is, it's a bigger issue than that. It's the notion of putting a regulatory impairment on the ability to lease out or to enter into any sort of engagement, financial engagement on your property. If we want to go down that path, I mean, I think that's something we would have to look at again. If we want to make, in other words, if you secure one of these permits, you can never rent or lease out your home or this, or this structure. I just candidly, councilmember, that's a bit of a concern from a legal standpoint. I mean, that's, that's why he would have flagged that.
I mean, typically, are the people staying there, I mean, I assume they're paying some kind of rent, correct?
Well, one would assume, yes, as a, running it as a personal care home. Because we would require a business license. We would look at it as a business.
You said as it is now, you could rent out, could you rent out to three unrelated people if you were living there, or rent out to four people if you weren't living there? Your personal residence?
Is that to me?
Yes.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
When we talk about a family, it's not the intent necessarily to rent, but it's that you could have four different unrelated people live there. I mean, I don't think we really want them to be
But could you have four different unrelated people rent rooms in your house currently? I guess is what I'm asking.
That would be a rooming house. So, I mean, we're just, that was just the definition of family. I mean, if you have four people who just happen to live there, then
So I think the issue is when you're charged, then it's a rooming house. But you are, you can have four friends living, four unrelated people, and meet the definition of the family.
I guess the question from Councilmember Thurman is, you know, obviously, if we want to make it mandatory that the person that owned the house or the quote "business" live on-premise or not, I don't know that, I certainly see the legal part of it, but I'm not dead-set either way at this point. But, Bill?
Maybe further to Joe's point down here about the age stipulation here. What determined that age, number one? And if it is somewhat discriminatory, I know there are facilities, or a facility that has existed in Milton, it was granted under Fulton County, I believe, as a group home. So how would you differentiate, or is there a differentiation between what we're looking at here, senior housing and a group home? And I guess the question again is, why is the fifty-five-year age limit stipulated in there?
I'm going to ask Robin to answer.
You're speaking of the facility on New Providence or Providence, correct?
Right.
Which is a children's, it's a home, and that's under a different use permit. And for whatever reason, Fulton County never included seniors, but there is a specific use permit for that. And I can get to it, and I can tell you what those requirements are for the group home for children.
More than eight, or they shall be allowed with the requirements
Right, yeah.
Not be located closer to a quarter-mile nears property line.
Right. So that's five to eight, and it's pretty much allowed anywhere, AG one through very, the smallest zoning districts, and I believe that's just, yeah.
So I guess the question is too, further to that, is why couldn't you have seniors included in that category of group homes?
I mean, I guess
Only a group home would have an age.
We'd just have to, we'd have to amend that use permit to allow all people
Would it be easier just to modify that chapter?
I don't know if it would be consistent with all the regulatory issues that the state has for what would technically be personal care homes. I mean, it may be a little bit apples to oranges, that's something we'd have to look into, whether it be high, mixing the requirements of a children's group home with what a assisted, not assisted, but a personal care type home, which that's really what we're looking at.
What, is there an age stipulation in group homes?
Typically, what we saw in the ordinances where they were about fifty-five years old. But it does, we, we do include anybody, at first we were going to say ambulatory, but that was discriminatory, so we took out that, that portion of it, so.
But, Robin, in the group home, is there any age limitation in the group home?
Oh, this group home that's here? Or what the state typically has? I mean, what we saw was most ordinances, other jurisdictions that was their cutoff was about fifty-five, so I'd have to do something
But what about a group home, not a
We're talking about group homes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, that we already have?
Yeah.
Or what's permitted right now? What's, what's on our books?
It's for children, and so I'd have to look to see what the definition of children would probably be eighteen and under, I would assume.
That's got to be a lot of that.
Let me interject real quick.
Hold on, hold on.
In section sixty-four, eighteen thirteen, it's titled "Group Residences." It says, as far as required districts, R six and TR, in this section, is allowed as a permitted use in districts A, A, L, O, I, M, I, X, C one, and C two. The standards is that the facility shall be for five persons or more, that they are permitted a curb-cut access, or are not, I'm sorry, permitted curb-cut access shall not be allowed from a local street. The minimum landscape strips and buffers required for O and I, as specified in Article three of the zoning ordinance, shall be provided. And parking will not be permitted within the minimum front yard. Facility will comply with all local, state, and federal regulations and provide the community development department with the applicable permit prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And it shall not be located any closer than a quarter-mile to the nearest property line of another group of residents. So that's, that's the one that's titled for not children. It's in section sixty-four, eighteen thirteen.
Well, the one on Providence Road is a lot closer than a quarter-mile from many other residents, but it must have been permitted
This is a quarter-mile of another group residence.
Group residence.
And this group residence is for, like, R six and TR and multifamily and commercial. So it doesn't, that group residence isn't allowed in the single-family districts.
Let me, let me go back to this, you know, I believe the intent here is an alternative, you know, place for seniors to live. To Bill's point, you know, or Bill, I'm asking a question, are you asking the fifty-five-and-old question as though, you know, there might be an issue with that, and we're restricting some people, maybe younger people, if they had needs or wanted to live there? Or is there
No. For, first off, is why is there a stipulation, an age stipulation at fifty-five? What's the basis of it, number one? And number two, as long as we have a section of that chapter that addresses group homes, why couldn't we modify it to include seniors? Or whatever we want to call
Us.
I would say, why does age enter into it at all?
Right. My question.
I would just think maybe if you didn't have some stipulation or intent there, next thing you know, you're just going to have group, a lot of group homes and
It seems arid.
College, college kids.
My, my understanding, Councilmember Lusk, is that there are, I mean, whenever you begin to discriminate, that's not what I mean, but basically make distinctions based upon criteria, how about that? There needs to be a basis for that. My understanding is that there are HUD-based rules of the federal government that set up allowances for this sort of exclusive housing. And I, my also understanding is that fifty-five is the point of demarcation that the federal law makes. And that the reason they do that is, my also understanding is that they have to make certain certifications to the federal government that a certain percentage of the occupants of these units are in fact led by members of that age. And if they do that, there are maybe certain tax inducements they get to incentivize the creation of this sort of living arrangement. Now, that is me speaking off the top of my head, but my understanding is, is that's, that's the state of the law generally.
Well, and I guess that's my point, is what basis are we operating from here? Is it, are we guided by the Federal Fair Housing Act?
Well, and, and I didn't want to interrupt you, but I think that to the extent we want to codify an age-based distinction, that I would want, I would want to, that's a safe place for us to be. Would, I suspect was the dialogue that y'all may have had with Mr. Fricki, so.
At the fifty-five?
Right, the fifty-five, right. How about this? That's the only way I've ever seen this done, is fifty-five is the point of demarcation.
As long as we have some basis there, that was my question.
Right, yes. It's a good, it's an excellent question.
Rick?
Ken, you said in here, I think we talked a little bit about it, you recommend more than four people based on the fact that foreign-related people can reside in a single-family home. But here, we're talking about someone renting space versus just living. You don't have a problem if we did just, the Planning Commission recommended four as the number, you're not saying there's an issue if we did go with four? You're just saying that?
Yeah, Councilmember Moore, I am comfortable with that being a council call.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Question, did the Planning Commission make any distinction between a subdivision versus non-subdivision regarding the number of homes? I didn't see that.
No.
Yeah.
They actually said three acres.
Three acres. But you got, I didn't know there'd be more than that. So we didn't have a basis for three acres, or is that, I know you asked the question, Bill, I didn't hear that answer. Why three acres?
That was just what they came up with.
Yeah, I think just so from, to have distance from neighbors, parking, all of those issues. They felt that a larger site of three acres would more adequately handle all those issues.
So, and I'd like to just point out that we have many other use permits that they require just a one-acre, minimum one-acre for a landscape business, for a vet clinic, that's by right, a kennel, there's lots of things that occur just for one acre. So basically, just, there's, there's other use permits that are allowed in AG one or in fact other residential districts. So I think it was just for the Planning Commission, that was a number that they felt comfortable with, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Joe?
Yeah, I'm just, it's hard to ask questions about what the Planning Commission was motivated by, because, you know, we're just speculating, but it sounds like they were trying to make sure that if a home like this were to be in existence, the owner of the property had some kind of a investment in managing it or running it or something like that. I'm a little confused by the acreage piece, the way the other council members are, because it's almost like we're trying to isolate the situation, which doesn't seem right to me. But, yeah, I would, I'm okay with four folks. I don't think I'm okay with the acreage. I would rather see that smaller. Or, or whatever the, you know, requirements are for any home in one of these districts. And then, yeah, I still have issues with the age thing, but I'm okay with that.
I would expect that their thought was, if it's on an acre, it could be in a subdivision, and this is more of a commercial enterprise, so they didn't want it in a, an area that was strictly a single-family residential. So that would, that would be my guess, but, you know.
You know, let me, before we do too much guessing, and supposing on what the Planning Commission said, we do have a member of the Planning Commission, if you wanted to address, make any comments, Noel, you're welcome to. Just have to fill out a card.
Thank you, sir. My name's Noel Carpenter. I reside at one-five-two-three-zero High Grove Road in Milton, on the Planning Commission. The reasoning behind that was, we were trying to limit this to, trying to keep it out of the subdivision space to where, for instance, if you had four or five people living in your home, at my house, then I don't know where these people would park, number one. I don't know where their visitors would park, number two. And I'm not so, I'm not quite sure that my neighbors would appreciate me having a semi-commercial or really a commercial enterprise going on in my house. It's one thing to have an office space in there and me conducting, you know, some kind of consulting business or something of that nature. But when you, when you start creating a traffic issue, people know something's going on in there. So that was kind of our thought, and we thought in these larger places where you've got two, three, five, ten, it makes a little bit more sense for us in that respect. And the same with, with the number of people. We were trying to say, you know, when you start getting up there in these larger numbers of people, it starts turning into a, a more commercial enterprise where we already know that there are homes where there's three, four individuals living there already, type of thing, that does occur in our areas. And then the last one was the, having the owner live there. We felt that, as Robin said, I think it was Robin that read that part, but we felt that if you did have the owner live there, they're going to maintain that enterprise. They're not going to own four or five of these in any place in the city, whether they're in the same neighborhood or not. They wouldn't have a string of these things, it wouldn't Um, they wouldn't have a string of these things. It wouldn't turn into a McDonald's type of operation. It's, it's their thing. They're gonna manage it, and they're gonna be responsible for it. It's just a same, if you had rental properties, if the owners live in there and you've got owner-owned property, they're gonna take care of it more. That's just how we felt.
Yeah.
That's, we, we could be wrong, but that's what we were going for.
Okay.
Questions?
Appreciate it. Thanks, Noel.
Councilmember Thurman, I just want to make a quick point back to you. I didn't have this in front of me the first time you asked the question. You've got it in front of me now. Typically, the direction that we give is always gonna be, you know, try not to impose restrictions on ownership that impair the ability, for instance, to rent it out, et cetera. However, in the context of this, I'm not as concerned about this. I mean, you know, hearing the planning commission member speak and looking at the language, you know, what this would preclude, of course, would be, for instance, a management company simply running the operation.
As a commercial business.
I think, I think this was much more of a practical consideration than purely a legal one, because I don't see what the council's doing or even proposing to do is a restraint on alienability of land. It's a policy, it's a policy decision. Whether or not, just as the planning commission member indicated, you want to allow a management company to be able to run those. And that's where the situation is. Very likely, the owner of the property would not be living there, probably be a management company running it. Or whether the planning commission recommendation is where you want to go, and that is, is we want to, in fact, prevent that very sort of activity and make these much more of a localized, non-almost-franchise operation. So I guess I say that to say, let that govern your concern and not my previous answer about me worried about alienability, because I don't think that's applicable in this context.
All right. Anybody else? Bill?
Yeah, I still have, uh, an issue, I guess, with the lot size. And I think, uh, speaking for myself, I'm just above fifty-five years old. I can, I look at it from the perspective that some people might look at it, that, uh, you, you, it's, you're trying to exclude seniors from your community when in fact we should be including all types of groups in our, in our, uh, community. And, uh, I think seniors are, uh, a very important part of our community. Obviously, I guess most of these folks here hope to be seniors one day. I'm not so sure about the three-acre size. It's, uh, it seems arbitrary to me, and, uh, I, I think there's some compromise there as far as lot size. And I understand the commercial aspect of it, too, so it's a balancing act there. And I'm not sure if we could write language in there that would preclude, uh, extensive commercial ventures out there from doing that.
So the city attorney, get comfortable, Ken, if I were to ask the question, what would, would just the simple removal of a minimum property size? That's a consideration if we're talking about a use permit, that the council could use their discretion on a case-by-case basis to make that call. Is that a fair statement?
It is. That is a fair statement.
So maybe just rather than providing a minimum lot size, you know, there might be a parcel out there at two-point-seven-six acres, to Bill's point, that, that works. And there might be a parcel out there at four-and-a-half acres that doesn't work.
I would be for that. I think we have to make a distinction between those parcels that are in subdivisions and not in subdivisions as well.
Well, subdivisions are governed by their.
By their association. So if that's the case, then I think piece going on parcel-by-parcel decision might make, make the most sense.
And I feel much better about a smaller lot size if the owner is living there rather than it's a commercial management company doing it.
Those are all data points that we won't know, except on a case-by-case basis that you could use in making your decision.
And to your point, maybe that's a, you know, when it comes, if, there's a disorderance and comes up for a use permit, then, you know, those are the questions you, lot size and what's.
And the underlying, and the underlying zoning. This is gonna be a missed point.
Is it possible to list certain criteria as, as things that will be considered for the use permit, including whether or not the owner's living there, what the lot size is, whether or not it's, is it possible to actually have a list of things that are criteria for making a decision on? So that it doesn't come across as being arbitrary every time we make a decision?
Because the only question I pose to the city attorney on that is if you start making a list, is there some assumption that it becomes an all-inclusive list? And you'd like to add something to it at a later point that may be vindication?
Right. So, so we have some general considerations that Robin has just provided to me. For instance, like whether the proposed use is consistent with the comp plan, compatibility with adjacent land uses. Now, those are all very standard land use criteria that you all look at whenever you're looking at any land use. But if the question is, is could you craft some alternative senior housing-specific criteria to also aid you in the use permit consideration? The answer is, of course, and to the city manager's point, I think if you wanted to do that, you would say, consideration shall include the general considerations applicable to all land use as well as the following list of special considerations. And we would need to include and mention, that's not exclusive. There, there can be other things. But at least you would allow some points for you to consider, uh, in your process.
Trey Burke?
As far as lot size and that sort of thing, taking away the age, how does this, what do we, what do we require? How does this compare to like a bed and breakfast type of, of use?
The bed and breakfast, well, I would also, I'll tell you what the bed and breakfast is in a second. Actually, bed and breakfast. There is no, it would be, it's allowed in AG one, R six, and TR, and there's no minimum lot size for the bed and breakfast. And I was also gonna point out that the group residence for five to eight children, there's no minimum lot size. And it's dictated from AG one, all including R two, R two A, R three, R three A, R four, R four A, R five. The idea, I think, was to be able to have those type uses integrated with the community. And, and I think that's what staff's attitude was, that we wanted to have the seniors be integrated into the community, whether it was an R three or an AG one. And obviously, we have those use permit considerations that we look at protective screening, we look at lighting, we look at times of oper, I mean, it's obviously gonna be there all the time. But, you know, that was our intent, was to integrate the seniors. And we already have a group home for children from five to eight, so we wanted to.
Yeah, I, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I'm, and I'm sorry, I keep asking, pointing out the same thing, but if, if, if we're not consistent throughout the age ranges, uh, I think that this makes us look like we're picking on the seniors as a category, which I don't think we really want to do. I, I understand the motivation behind some of our recommendations, but when, when you just look at it in a little bit bigger context, it just doesn't seem right, so.
Thank you, thank you for that comment, Joe.
Hey, I'm over fifty-five, so.
Rick, did you have?
Yeah, um, I guess in, in looking, the only thing, differentiation I see between like a children's home or a housing and seniors is potentially the number of vehicles. And I know that's what Noel said, so the challenge is depend on, how do you design it so you don't have the adverse impact of, okay, awesome, we've got one car per person plus the owner and another car, and awesome, that, that would be, do you have enough space for that without it being crowded? That's, I guess, uh, what I heard them talking about.
You know, we gotta remember where we live, in Milton, and that's a, a Milton issue, as we call it. How many, uh, families with four kids or whatever, and each person in the house has one-point-five cars and all that? I think we need to keep in mind, typically in, in a use like this, the actual residents probably wouldn't have a car. So it probably less impact than a, a family of five living in the house. I think to the other point, I think Joe brought up, in a, an HOA in a neighborhood, it may not allow, you know, renting it out like this. So, you know, I think we're, we're kind of wired almost on the defense a little bit on council with issues that aren't a non-residential, uh, uses to protect everybody. But also, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open-minded to look at the other way. You know, I know for myself and, or, you know, if my mom didn't live with me or whatever, you'd like to have another choice rather than a big, you know, fifty, hundred-bed facility. But maybe, you know, somebody opened up their home, had their mother, but then also three or four of their friends in an intimate, um, you know, case. And I know, uh, you know, there is a couple, there's some in Alpharetta. If you notice, they don't seem to have much impact. So again, I, I, you know, I'm looking at this as a positive way to give folks a different option to live out their, uh, senior years and, and be low-impact to the, to the community. And, and again, I know some of the, you know, issues, folks worried about cars and, um, you know, in a neighborhood, but the HOA would probably take care of that. And, and again, I don't think there's typically gonna be, uh, you know, usually that many cars, so.
Bill?
Maybe further to your point, too, uh, as far as issuing a use permit, maybe there is a condition that there be restriction on number of vehicles. Another point of discussion, but I had a question, too, for Robin. On B and Bs, um, in what zoning classifications are they allowed?
Um, they are allowed pretty much everywhere. Well, not everywhere, let me get back to it. Um, bed and breakfast, I stand corrected, AG one, R six, and TR, townhouse residential. So it's, and then we also allow, um, bed and breakfast, I believe, in the Form-based code as well, so.
Okay, so, uh, they could be commercial ventures then, too?
Oh, yes, yes. We are, we just, you all just approved one, um, over there on Batesville. The, it was associated with the agriculturally-related use for the wedding venue.
Right, right, right. So those could be, uh, commercial ventures managed by several different companies?
Well, I will say, though, the bed and breakfast, there is a requirement that the owner live on the premises.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
I'll summarize what I've taken away, just so we bring ordinance forward next week that captures what I think I heard. Are we good removing reference to minimum, to minimum lot size? I guess the other question I'd ask for you is, I heard the maximum number of residents to drop from six and to, down to four.
And I would, I would say, I, I've heard that from some council. I would be fine with six.
I would be fine with six.
Four, because I think there does have to be some kind of, you know, in order to provide a good service and a good thing, you know, there's gotta be some kind of economies of scale.
Would you like us to draft, I know Councilmember Thurman talked about criteria. I've captured at least what I think is the criteria that you're talking about, which is, that are important that you'd consider, which is the owner living onsite or not, the lot size, the maximum number of residents, and parking requirements. Those at least are the topics that I've kind of heard. Do you want a list of criteria crafted around that? Or do you want to just leave it on a case-by-case basis and you identify those criteria and the items for them?
Let me ask you this. Rather than a lot size and a, and a number of residence size, what if we could have some kind of sliding scale to, you know, let's say somebody with ten acres and a very large house, you know, that's different than somebody on one acre with a three-bedroom house or whatever. I'm just, you know, is there any desire to have a, a, a minimum or a standard? But then, you know, if somebody with twenty, thirty acres or whatever, or, you know, wanted to.
So that would then remove any reference to a maximum number of residents.
But I'm just, I'm asking, yes, but I'm, and I'm not, maybe, or maybe it goes down, you know? Although six residents is not that many residents, you know, I was gonna say if it was a very small site and very small home, but I guess the.
Could that not just go as part of a, a special consideration in the list of criteria? And you're almost, the way you said that, almost sounds like a ratio.
Yeah, right, that's what I was, I mean, because there is a difference, you know, if you had a, you know, home on a one acre and you could put six people in. But, you know, we talk about, you know, preserving land and, and conservation. If somebody that had a ten-acre parcel in a bigger home, it may be a way for them to be able to keep it that way. And the impact on the community is not gonna, you know, it's gonna be less than if there were ten homes there, so.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I like as part of criteria, but not as a set standard, just as criteria.
Well, I guess, I guess, could you do it this way, to where, you know, let's say we had a six-person maximum, um, if we want to do a minimum lot size or not. But then, you know, on a case, we've got case basis, you could increase, or do you need to have that ceiling?
The ability to increase would be through the form, through the request of a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So a body would determine if that number bigger than six, and it's not gonna be this body.
Okay.
If you put a maximum number in there.
I, I'm just thinking outside the box that, you know, it may, may kill two birds with one stone as far as, you know, a way to, for people to preserve their land. And, uh, but again, it may be tough to, to put that on paper.
I find if you don't put a maximum number in there and use that as part of your discretion in approving or not approving a use permit, there's nothing that says that you have to say a maximum number of six.
And if it's a ten-acre parcel, eight may be appropriate for the parcel, you know, if it preserves the land.
And the structure's gonna, you know, you know, we might say twenty, but if there's only four bedrooms in the home or whatever, that's, you know, it's not gonna work. The market will watch that.
The, the one other issue you need to consider is, is the state licensing and that, that these are licensed up to six. And after that, you, you get into another category. Um, so that's why we were using the, the six.
Maybe something with, if you have a maximum, but we're still gonna consider all the terms, looking at what's appropriate, where someone brings forward. This is a home they want to use, or this is the home they want to build, it's on this number of acres, that, that is, we could deny. We still have the flexibility to say, we're trying to do this on, and we don't, we don't see that as appropriate.
That's right.
Part of the reason we have the use permit versus spelling it all out, if we could spell it all out, we wouldn't have to hear it. It would be about, by right.
That's right. It's a case-by-case.
Sometimes we're better off not having strict boxes that everything has to fit into, but actually looking at things on a case-based, case judgment basis.
Agreed.
Let's see what, uh, Ken's coming up with right now.
Well, we're just saying that if, in fact, that there's a maximum number of residents that's tied to a state license, um, then we should just let the state license language control that as opposed to us controlling it by local code. There's no reason for us to duplicately regulate that. That we wouldn't allow one of these that couldn't get a state permit. If you can't get a state permit of more than six people, then it doesn't have to be set here.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the state limits it to six, so even if we said ten, they could only do six.
I don't know that to be, that's, but that's what, Kathy would know that better than I, but if that's what the state says, then that's interesting.
Or between now and next meeting, maybe you could confirm that.
We'll confirm that.
Maybe at this point, we don't put a number, but if we can confirm that if the state licenses six, then that kind of, by default.
I mean, it's, it's either regulated, uh, and if it is, then maybe a reference to the fact that, you know, it, it shall, it shall be governed by pertinent state regulations. And that takes us out of the equation of having to call strikes and balls on the number.
And just by naming it, calling it this category, senior housing or alternate housing for seniors, we would automatically invoke that, you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay. Anybody else? And obviously, any other input, you know, during the next few days, too, that would help on that, so. All right, anything else? Okay. All right, um, city, do we have any, uh, public comment on our next item?
No, we don't, sir.
Okay, if you'll please call the item.
This item is discussion of ours in fifteen twenty-seven, to amend the sign ordinance, keep chapter sixty-four, article sixteen. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, on June eighteenth of two thousand fifteen, the U.S. Supreme Court issued their opinion on Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona. From this case, the court appears to be taken to position that any distinctions in the sign code that offer favorable treatment or less favorable treatment based on the message of the sign may constitute a constitutional infirmity. Based on this conclusion, the attached, the attached text amendment corrects these infirmities in the current sign code. The amendments indicated in red represent the necessary changes to the city's sign ordinance necessary to be consistent with the Supreme Court's ruling. So you have, um, before you, um, in red, all of the, uh, attorneys' recommended changes. However, in addition, the staff, since the sign code was all open to, uh, uh, accommodate these changes as per the Supreme Court, staff, um, has included some minor changes, and those are highlighted in yellow. And they, in essence, are basic cleanup ones. However, there is one that I want to bring to your attention on page four. And that refers to definitions of a window sign. And we've deleted the portion of the definition that included any language within five feet of the interior of the window and, and stated that any signage visible from inside the structure and is reasonably discernible from the closest public or private road exterior of the structure. the closest public or private road exterior of the structure is considered a window sign. And this really was the issue that came up with CLA in terms of the fact that our current code says that you need to be five feet back from the window, but we all know we can see it. So, we have changed the language to call that a window sign, if you can, if you can see it from the street. So, that has been the change to the language to accommodate that. The other changes are cleanups, but certainly willing to discuss or answer questions on any of the yellow. If it's a red item, that's, that's a can item.
Okay, I'll open up for questions for Kathy or Ken. Well, Ken, do you want to?
Well, just, I just want, you know, we have gone through this before, members of the council. We did this shortly after Reed versus Gilbert came down in the context of the moratorium. Y'all may remember that, the signage moratorium, just to sort of do a stopgap measure. And I think I'll tell you the same thing I told you back then. Y'all, Milton has a very good sign code, and so we did go through, as most governments that are responsible governments in Georgia did, they go through and sort of dust off their sign code and try to look at it from a standpoint of constitutional infirmity and constitutional integrity in light of Reed. We did that here, and candidly, there wasn't a lot to change, which is a good thing. But we did go through with a very discerning eye and tried to look at anything that had the least bit of a sniff of content or viewpoint non-neutralty, and that's what we changed. So, just to give you an example, and again, council, we have gone through this previously, but if you look at page two, definitions, definitions are always an easy mark for plaintiff's lawyers attempting to overturn a sign code. Flag, the way Milton had it defined, if you look at the red language, the flag was used as a symbol of a government. Well, right there, by our very definition of flag, we have now defined the purpose of that method of communication. And so, we felt out of abundance of caution, we needed to strike that, which we have done. Illegal activity, a little further down, we had to strike that as well, because we had signs, we had a prohibition against signage that expressed a communication that was illegal activity. Unfortunately, someone could argue that that is my First Amendment right to be able to advocate for change by way of signage, and it could be something that was illegal. I think we all can realize there is conduct in this country that has been illegal historically, that is not illegal now, and they, it was First Amendment rights that were the, served as the bedrock for their, the change in the law, or the change in the public perception of the conduct that is now allowing that conduct or behavior, or whatever it is, to be legal. So, the point being is that was, that was a problem under, under Reed, and so we struck that. I don't, unless the council wants me to, Mr. Mayor, I'm perfectly happy to go through all of this, but again, we've done it before. I will say on page six, just as a means of sort of ending my presentation, it was kind of a, we've added some neat aspirational language, notwithstanding any provision of the contrary, "The article shall be interpreted in such a manner that the availability, land use, or other triggering event or condition for entitlement to apply for erect or place signage within the city shall not have the effect of dictating or controlling any manner of the content of the message." The point being is that, to the extent that there is anything within this sign code that suggests that there is a content-based reason for the ability to put it up in the first place, we want to be able to go back and say, no, no, whatever the message is that you want to put on the sign, you can put on the sign. City of Milton is not attempting to be, to dictate that message. So, I know that you all have heard this before from me. Please, Mr. Mayor.
The only question I have, the only question I would have is, at what point would signs, signage be considered threatening or terroristic?
Right. So, now you're talking about the distinction between constitutionally protected speech and unprotected speech. And of course, you know, the old adage, you probably all heard it before, of yelling fire in a crowded theater is not protected speech, right, because that speech put others in jeopardy. So, when does it become that speech? That's one of those situations where I'm not sure I'm in a position to sit here and read you off a, a list of categories of when. I mean, so often, particularly within the context of communication, a lot of it is context. A lot of it may be where it's placed. We have seen, for instance, speech exhibited at a rally at Stone Mountain that in other venues might be considered quite threatening and inflammatory. And so, candidly, the context of that speech is critical. And so, I'm not able to answer your question directly. I know what you're talking about. It is unprotected speech, can be, but we have to consider on a case-by-case basis, which I would do with the city manager, if any issue like that came up.
Bill?
Obviously, having had the opportunity to go through this, this whole document, but since, since we adopted this, what, eight years ago, almost nine years ago, there'd been quite a bit of discussion, particularly from the businesses of Birmingham Crossroads, regarding size and locations and numbers of signs. I don't know what we have in the file as far as public document, or public comments go that address that issue up there. The general consensus, at least from the businesses up there, was the restrictive sign ordinance, or the restrictions in the sign ordinance had a very negative impact on the survival of businesses up there. If we're going to open this up at this point in time, I'd like to get some more community input from the commercial businesses out there, not only up in Birmingham Crossroads where it has had more of an impact, but possibly from the other commercial corridors that we have here in town. I think it deserves an open discussion.
The sign ordinance, as I understand it, is, for the citywide, is, is more general. And then we have specific ordinances that are part of overlays that can be actually more restricting than our general sign ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, for the Birmingham Crossroads, it's actually the Birmingham overlay that is more restrictive, that is what's requiring, limiting the amount of signage that people up there can have, and I think we got Crab Apple.
Crab Apple, the same way, exactly.
So, so if we want to open those up, we need to open up really the overlay itself rather than the entire sign ordinance, correct?
Robin, can you speak to that? Is it in the sign ordinance or the overlay, the expenditures?
The sign portions, in Fulton County, the signs were kind of embedded with the overlay, but when we re, redid the sign ordinance nine years ago, we, we took them out of the overlays and embedded them into the sign ordinance. So, as you read through the sign ordinance, there will be sections for Birmingham Crossroads, and now for the Deerfield Form-Based Code and the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. So, there is, it does make a difference for those areas.
But we can go ahead and adopt the recommended changes here.
Right, yeah.
And then go specifically, look at some of, because I agree, we need to specifically look at some of those other areas.
I mean, we, we did as little, I mean, we, we do want to do some reorganization to the ordinance, but we felt like we needed to progress with these changes based on the Supreme Court. So, again, I guess, it was staff's opinion. We didn't really want to mess with it too much. We wanted to get done what, what we needed to get done, and we'll be more than happy to open it up again for more specific changes, if you all want us to.
In fact, Robin's point about consolidation, you will see multiple instances in here where similar language was in different sort of overlay. So, so we had, it's, you'll see a lot of the duplicate language we changed, for instance, like, things like graduation banners and things of that nature, were in multiple different portions of the code, and we've, we've modified all of that.
Okay, Rick, if you have something?
Yeah, I guess the, bridge off from what Karen said, when I looked through this, it looked like most of the changes were on the front end, on the general sign ordinance, so we weren't really touching anything down in individual overlays. But I do agree, we've heard, we have heard from businesses up in that area that have been struggling, a number of them have closed. So, but we could adopt these changes to get us in compliance, and then we, if we, we wanted to, we could put that on as a different agenda item to get specific input from the community.
Absolutely.
I guess we don't need a whole lot of input from the community when the Supreme Court's told us what we have to do.
That's, that's correct. My recommendations will remain my recommendations.
I want to reiterate, though, what we're talking about as far as the businesses of Birmingham Crossroads, their, their businesses are down right now, and we need to do what we can to help.
Okay, anybody else?
Have I captured that as direction to bring that back?
I would support bringing it back.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay. All right, CD, do we have any public comment on item number three?
We do not, sir.
All right. You'll call that item, please.
This item is discussion of City of Milton's Strategic Plan 2016 through 2021. Mr. Chris Waterborne.
Is that a comment, call it? Okay, thank you.
This is a follow-up and then bringing to you kind of the visual document that's going to capture what we, if you recall, we had a staff and council retreat at the YMCA several months ago, and we needed to take the information that was provided by the council in conjunction with the staff and kind of group it together into a, a plan that makes sense, a plan that made sense so that we'd have something to officially adopt that would go into place January the 1st of 2016, and carry us to December the 31st of 2020. Obviously, it would be a living document. I'm not hoping that you sit here tonight and go through all 22 pages of this. This is information that you were a part of the construction of. And so, when you look at page one, if you'll do that, and you see that there's a vision there and a mission and core values that's different than what we have today, that's because that was what came out of our work session together earlier in the fall. You can see that then we've bundled them up under five different goals, which are economic development, park and recreation, enrichment, strategic efficient, and engaged government, preserve what makes Milton unique, and build community connections. In each of those goals, you'll find objectives, initiatives, and then the relevant capital projects, just as kind of placeholders that show that funding is attached to many of the larger things that you've come up with, that we should be pursuing in the next five years. And then you'll also see some timelines, and you'll see the timelines over five years as to what years we anticipate completion or doing something. Some things happen on a every other year basis, so you'll see that there's kind of a visual there that gives you a quick summary of when certain things are going to, going to be happening. We built this with next year in mind, and we built it with having the right format to be able to provide to the community a scorecard next year and let the community know how we were doing with, with respect to this strategic plan, whether we were meeting the objectives and the, through the specific initiatives that was agreed upon, areas where we might be slow to perform, and areas where we might be quick to perform. So, you can see that it's been laid out in a very color-friendly, very graphic, visual way that hopefully we can build to a scorecard and release that to the public in the first quarter of 2017. What I'd ask you to do is, over the next five to seven days, this comes before the council Monday night at the council meeting, if you'd spend, and, and, we should be able to get through this in a half hour or less, if you'd just spend the time to, to read through it and make sure that it continues to capture what you recall from the work session that we did over the, over the summer, please call, email with questions, if you have any. But unless anybody has any initial reaction, I'm certainly happy to take that. If you have any questions as to process, I'm certainly happy to answer those. Once you adopt the strategic plan, at the next meeting, and it goes into effect in January, what you will then see is us come back with tactical department plans that show how we anticipate making good on, on the goals and strategies and objectives that you've approved. And this will kind of be an overarching document that will then have more tactical deployment documents that embed underneath it. So, that's our, that's our plan. If you look at it and you go graphically, it just doesn't look good, or visually, you'd like to see something change. This has changed many times in the last couple of weeks. And I'm happy to, happy to take those suggestions. This is an example of a document that I know you all approved, and that we've been using in a private firm to do some of our communications needs in the, in the interim, in the gap of us not having a staff member there. This is an example of a document that was produced by the company that we have consulting with us, so it gives you some example of what, what some of those capabilities are. We did receive responses to our RFQ earlier in the week, or last week, and we're going through the evaluation process of that now as to whether or not we recommend to the council an house source solution for some of those responsibilities. You should see that in January. But just, just to give you some example of the document that was produced, not, not in-house, but hopefully you can look at it and see that it looks like it might have just come from down the hall. So, questions, if you have them now or over the next week, that this should bring at least the document part of the strategic plan to completion.
Looks good, all right. Any comments or questions right now?
I wouldn't expect you to. Take it home digest, I wanted to just give you the background of how it came to be and publicly give it to you. It would, after approval, it's not going to be in a format like this where it's stapled in the corners. I don't think that that's the type of document we're going to provide ultimately, but we'll, we'll actually get them printed up and distributed once we know that we for sure have an approved document.
I only have one question on this.
Okay.
And basically, as far as the 2016 initiative to reestablish the Historical Preservation Commission, get that going. I mean, obviously, we have some issues with that. And we have, the council, decided what we want to do with the Historical Preservation Commission, reestablish that. We have some appointments that still could be filled.
At this point, the commission exists.
Yeah.
Because council's taken no action for it not to exist. It has two members appointed to it, which means it can't meet.
Right.
And so, I do need some council direction on that.
Instead of saying reestablish it, to me, it makes it just sound like it's coming back the way it was. I think maybe to reinvent it, or whatever we need to do in order to, to get what we need to achieve our goals.
Right, we need to readdress.
Reinvent works. It's funny, I looked at a report earlier today that came out that talked about the workforce of the future, and our HR folks will laugh at me because I summarized all 44 pages of this report as blow up HR. And they didn't really say the word blow up, they used the word reinvent human resources. But, so, I saw that word a couple of times.
It's code for blow up.
It's code for blow up, yes.
Because reestablish, to me, makes it sound like we're just going right back where we came from.
Right. I mean, wrong, wrong term, but right idea.
That's what the term is here, says reestablished, that's why.
Well, in historic context, you may want to say restore.
Restore? Well, I don't know if we want to restore it the way it was. We want to, we want to somehow or another make it to be what we need it to be.
Got it.
We need.
Okay. Thank you. I'll take that and, and make that modification. Send any others that you have. It will certainly get those modified as well. We moved from last, the last meeting, because I anticipated we were going to be here late. We moved the department reports from the, we're at the last council meeting to tonight's meeting. So, without further ado, I'd like to, I'd like to do those.
Chief, is he here?
Yes, he is, I think.
Chief is here. So, we'll start with the department update from the police department.
Can I make one request on these reports? Is there a way to maximize the, the size of the words on the page so that?
The font size needs to be a little bigger.
Yeah, can we, can we have a minimum font size or something we use for this?
This appears to have shrunk from last time.
It's going to shrink it down so far, you have no clue what it says.
Need a 55 and over.
Needs to be a bar graph or something, maybe, to give this some.
We'll make the, we, we'll make it bigger.
I don't have any problem with that.
I don't either.
Good evening, mayor and council. I also, you know, the older I get, the further these things get away from my, my face as I'm trying to read them. Never understood the rationale as to why you move things further away, but I guess age is doing it to me. Couple of quick things I just want to bring up. Last week, thanks to the cooperation of Alpharetta and the Police Athletic League over there, they included us and shop with a cop. We had our police department, we had a bunch of our, our firemen over there, and we were over at Walmart, who was also a great contributor, to bring several kids from the region to go shop with a cop. And it was a great experience. The, the kids all had smiles on their faces. We had, I think, 101 kids that came through with their families, and I don't know how they pulled this off, but it was extremely well organized, and everybody had a great time. So, it was, really was a great thing to be involved with. I had, it was my first involvement with it, and it was, it was very impressive. Second thing, we had, as I think most of you are aware, we had an arrest for a drug-related homicide on December 4th. It involved the lethal injection of heroin into the victim, and also coupled with a failure to summon aid once the, the victim started to show signs of distress. That is the second one in the city of Milton this calendar year, and they, they're both homicides. That being said, we are going to, we were going to anyway, start a program, but we're going to speed this up and look at a campaign for educating the public on, on a few things. First, we want to push House Bill 965, which is commonly known as the Georgia 911 Medical Amnesty Law, which provides for... Amnesty Law, which provides for limited immunity in most minor cases of possession. We want to make sure that people know that the first thing you need to do is call for help. I mean, preservation of life, the sanctity of life is far more important than anything else that we have to do out there. It's the, it's the beginning of not only our code, but, but every police department's code throughout the country is the preservation of life. So we want to make sure we educate our community members on those protections and make sure everybody's, if you ever, if anybody's ever caught in that horrible situation, that their first, their first move is to call 911 and get that life-saving intervention in place. I put something out on Facebook regarding it. It is very similar to a heart attack or a stroke where seconds count. The sooner the intervention is delivered, the much, much better the outcome. So this, this, another devastating loss to the city of Milton. We're also going to look at, beyond the House Bill, getting more of that life-saving naloxone out there. It is not commonly known, but while you do need a prescription, people don't need individual prescriptions to be able to get naloxone, you only have to show a need, and we're going to start getting some information out there about how people with loved ones that are, that are suffering from, from drug addiction, how they can access naloxone and have it on hand in case, God forbid, they're, they're in this situation. It's very, very simple to administer, and as I said, seconds count. And this is not about passing judgment on people, this is about saving lives. Law enforcement will, will come after that. The, another thing on a much happier note, as you are all aware, the, we had a field save this past week, us in the fire department. We had Officer Sprouls was, was on the scene and started doing CPR, and fortunately, the fire department was not far behind, and what I understand, we had a, the positive outcome still continues. So it's great that we were able to have that training delivered, and only that, we're able to execute that training well, and glad to have been part of that, and I appreciate the fire chief acknowledging the police officer for a job well done. And to close, a couple of weeks ago, we had partnered with Stone Creek Church on kind of a holiday joy-spreading thing. Sorry, I didn't, you see, I didn't prepare the title for it. So what it was is, we identified a, with the help of a committee they put together and a bunch of our police officers, we identified a handful of people that were either victims of crime over, over the past year or were dealing with some other negative situation. And we couched it under the belief that we just need some follow-up information. So we went out a couple of Saturdays ago with, with the help of Stone Creek, and we went and rang the doorbells, and instead of getting, looking for follow-up information, those that were victims of theft got many of the same items returned to them, obviously purchased new. Others got, we were able to fulfill some needs that the officers were able to observe throughout their dealings with them, and it went over extremely, extremely well. The good thing is, is Stone Creek has a top-notch production company or production group, I shouldn't say company, and they got the whole thing filmed. We're waiting for the final edited cut of that, and when we get that, I'll be looking forward to sharing that with you. But it went extremely well, we're very excited that Stone Creek reached out to us to partner on this, and I think it'll shed a lot of positive light on the city of Milton.
Yeah, the only problem I see with that, my parents had a dog one time, that when she'd go out and get the paper and bring it back, they'd give her a treat, and next week she went and got two papers, and they have some people calling, hey, I've got an old TV, calling, oh, it got stolen.
We'll be sure to replace that old TV.
Just kidding.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
One question.
Yes.
How do you like the winter down here?
This is incredible. Absolutely incredible.
It's colder than normal, but, you know.
This is, I spent the weekend sitting on my deck, catching up with work and reading and relaxing, I got, this is incredible. Thank you for making it possible.
Stand by.
Yeah, we're going to be paying for this, it's been too good.
Okay, Chris, next.
Couple of quick updates on some of our projects. State Route 372 in the Crab Apple area, our Northwest Connector project was awarded by GDOT, did get awarded to Baldwin, so they'll be working through their paperwork to get contracts finalized, and then we'll get a schedule on when that project is expected to begin. So as soon as we have that, we'll also forward that on to you. Birmingham Hopewell Roundabout is stalled at the present moment. Utility relocations are our issue right now. Trying to get Comcast off of the existing poles and relocate it over to the new poles that Sony has set is our biggest issue right now, so as soon as we can get them off a dead center, Baldwin will be able to get back out there and resume work on that roundabout.
I'm getting a lot of complaints about it, it's really on that.
Yes, we are too.
Is there a timeline that they have to do it in, or can they just stall it forever if they wanted to?
You know, they were supposed to be completed with their work last week, they're getting close, but right now they are not done. If we can get them off, AT&amp;T will be right behind them, we'll be able to get that, those poles that are in our future travel lanes out of the way, so I think Matt's doing everything within his ability right now to force that issue and try and get that resolved, but until Comcast can get moved, we're waiting on them.
Can we get the poles just delivered to the park that Kathy needed and Matt?
So, so the poles, the new utility poles are already in place, it's matter of in the self-transfer over from the old ones.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Webb Road at Deerfield, we had some turn lane improvements that were proposed there, all the bids that we got came in over budget on that. We've elected to reevaluate that project and either re-scope that or include it in one of our larger bids, our paving bid for next year to try and get prices back down in the area that we thought they would, should have come in at. So we'll be looking at probably extending that project out until next calendar year. The Mayfield Road Streetscapes is our other project in, in order, and we are just waiting on GDOT to give us notice to proceed on our driveway easement acquisitions, that we can get that done, and then we'll get that out to bid. Looking at doing a bid on that in conjunction with the city of Alpharetta to take advantage of the economy of scale and get a lot of sidewalk projects in on that, so hopefully we can get that joint package out early next year too. And that's it. I'd like to also just note that my report was shorter than the police department's report. Any further comments on that, should be directed to Chief Kokoff.
Thank you, Carter.
Can I ask you a general question?
As long as it doesn't extend my report time.
The clock's gone. You only have 30 seconds.
I noticed along, is that, the section of Mayfield that's in Milton, does say Milton, I don't know if it's a half and half, is that a state route, or is that just local?
Mayfield itself is just a local road.
Okay, because the question, some people have raised concerns about the curviest, you know, closest part of, of Mayfield is a section that's in Milton, and it's 45 miles per hour, yet in Alpharetta it's 35, as soon as you cross over Crab Apple, it's 35. Is there any consideration for making that safer, because especially as we start to have more foot traffic?
The reduction of the speed limit from 45 to 35 is in our current request for a speed limit permit modification, so.
Okay, so we're already, we're already working on that?
It's in process.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, Chris, I'm next.
Jim Craig, Parks Direct.
Hello, everyone. Very happy to announce that we have brought on board a new employee in the department. Tom McElveen is not new to the city, he's already served a term under Cindy Bonacci as a intern. He worked the summer of 2010 here. Tom is local to the area, lives in Canton right now, and was spent the last five years working for the city of Alpharetta as a recreation supervisor. So he's already jumped in and has taken on some projects already. He's a fast learner, and he's very eager, and we're very excited to have Tom McElveen join us. Do want to let you know, we have had a problem at the Thomas Bird House. There was a leak which we have been trying to pursue, we finally did a, on the Friday after Thanksgiving, we did a leak test and found the sources of the leak. However, the damage, there is some damage inside the facility, which we currently have an insurance claim in that we're pursuing that will be around $11,000. So we have the leak fixed, and now we want to get the rest of the damage repaired. We are doing so without any impact on operations at the senior center. Our basketball program is doing great. We've got about 135 kids involved, I went out there this past Saturday, and it's, they're, these kids, they're, they're running around, they're having a lot of fun, you know, it's, and it was just a blast. So the program is doing well, we're working with Kim Coleman this year, we switched over to him from our previous provider, and it's taking off. So the gymnasium space is certainly going to be something that we're looking for as we, as we're growing here. And then last bit of good news I want to share with you, that on the same Saturday that we had Christmas in Crab Apple, we also had Christmas at Bell Memorial Park. We had the Murray Laxmas Tournament, and we had over 800 competitors from five states. We had over 75 teams came in, we took the two rectangular fields, we divided them up into threes, so we had six fields going on a continuous basis. The plaza was turned into a festival atmosphere with marketers and all kinds of things going on, and it was just exciting watching all the teams that put together, there was teams going out, they were dressed as elves, Santa Clauses, all kinds of neat, neat stuff, and it was, it was huge. We had easily 2,000 people out there on Saturday. The, did plan on having the boys Murray Laxmas Tournament this past weekend, unfortunately that didn't happen, they didn't get enough teams to sign up to justify having the tournament. And that's what we got for now. Any questions?
Questions for Jim?
One quick question. I know we made the decision at the last minute to put turf on the second rectangular field. Do you feel like that that's part of the reason we were able to get tournaments such as this?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, and I will also tell you that since the park went into use October 3rd, there has not been a single day gone by that I have not been called at least once to, for opportunities to try and rent the facilities.
Yeah, I just want to say I was there on, that, this Saturday with you, and that was just a great, great, great event for the city of Milton, and just recommend you and the staff and public works and everything, just phenomenal. Obviously, we're still trying to finish the parking and the trails, and when do, when do the trails around the fields get done? I've saw they're working on those, on those still, do we know?
I'll defer to Carter.
Actually, we'll be looking at those this week to open those up, so.
This week, yeah.
We get through our punch.
Right.
Should be hopefully before the holidays.
Well, I just, I just want to commend both you guys, great job on that, and that was a huge event and very successful.
What the parents kept telling us about this, this event has been going on for several years at North Park, and the layout at North Park is significantly different. The two rectangular fields are separated not only by a road, but there's quite a distance between the two fields. They said having the two fields right next to each other and then the plaza and of course the playground, the playground, my gosh, we were, it was packed. And a new tradition seems to have formed in that if you became a team that won, they would get all the girls together and they would climb the, the one climbing structure and put a lacrosse helmet on top, they said it looks like a Christmas tree, and they all wore ornaments on the decoration. There were so many teams doing that as they won, so it was a lot of fun.
Okay, anybody else? I just want to add, you know, probably not too many days go by, I don't get some kind of compliment on the park, so I know, you know, I'm, I'm not just directing that just at you, Jim, but obviously you had a big part of it.
I said, Carter.
The rest of our staff, Carter, council, city, you know, everybody, so it just, it's a great thing, so just want to thank everybody.
Well, I thank you.
To get us to that point.
Yeah, we've built a beautiful park, and I thank all of you for the support.
Carter still has the shortest report, I'll just point that out.
Come on Kathy, can you beat him?
Chris is keeping track.
That will go to Kathy.
Okay, I'm talking fast. All right, so we are about to start the five-year update to our 2030 comp plan, our first meeting of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, better known as CPAC, will be next week, December 16th. Or is that, that's this week, isn't it? Oh, my goodness, yes, this week. In terms of rezonings, we have a rezoning request to rezone from T5 Limited to A Medium Density Apartments for the existing 356-unit apartment development, the North Park Apartments, and that's really a requirement of their refinancing, so we'll, we'll get into that next week on that. We have some text amendments which we review tonight, dealing with the use permit for the alternative housing for seniors, as well as amendments to the sign ordinance, and you'll be seeing those next Monday night. And then following that, we have a whole series of text amendments dealing with the increase to the rural view shed, changing the design of the entryways for subdivisions. Those are being considered right now by the Planning Commission. They held their first workshop to discuss these items on December the 10th. They're going to follow that with a meeting on January 27th on this, and then they're aiming to vote on these, on their series of recommendations on February 24th, and then you'll see it on March 21st. And then lastly, we will be moving through the process, a consideration to amend the Deerfield Form-Based Code, and it really is essentially a correction to the code, a minor correction. This will go through the rezoning process, and you'll see it on February 18th. That is it. Any questions?
All right, thank you Kathy.
I have one question. How are we doing on TDRs? Do we have inquiries with regards to sending areas, trying to sell TDRs?
Yes, yes, we've got three potential deals in play. One is very serious, and the other two are still working through the details. We do have a willing seller who has actually been acquiring land for the purpose of selling TDRs from it, and they're in good locations. So I think the program is alive and well, certainly, and we're seeing more and more interest in it, and certainly as the economy comes around as well, it's, it's really a very good tool for developers to use.
Correct.
Okay.
So Sarah's not here tonight, she's in Memphis, we, she planned that trip a year, a while ago for the holidays, and didn't know that we would be pushing this to tonight, so she's not here. The one thing, Mr. Mayor, maybe I could, if you wouldn't mind giving the council a quick update on your meeting this morning with the Fulton County and the Tees Blos, that's going to be a topic of much discussion over the next couple of months, and much discussion from the staff perspective as well as the council perspective, so it'd be nice to kind of get the council up to speed on, on that, and then I've got one quick update on the Planning Commission. Is that, are you prepared to do that tonight, or are you prepared to do that a week from now?
Although it's, it's like herding cats, you can imagine trying to get 14 different cities to agree, agree on something, but it will be, we will have to bring something forward just to get a, a direction from council very soon on, on the Tees Blos, whether, you know, the options are there of either zero, or a half a penny, or three-quarters a penny, or a penny, that additional tax would go, would go for transportation. It's kind of a, it's interesting because, you know, MARTA obviously would like, like the money, you've got some cities that are not for having any of it go to MARTA, some of it just for transportation, and again, like I say, and if, I don't know the exact requirements, but everybody has to agree, so you can imagine how, how interesting it is with 14 different cities, and some of them that have already done resolutions against a plan that they've never seen yet, so we'll, as we get more information, have to bring it back and kind of get a position that the city, you know, wants to, wants to stand behind and all that, so. And Chris, if you want to, from the, staff, you've been meeting with staff people too, if you want to.
Are you good if I take the, the question and answer, kind of that frequently asked question thing that's how long it's put together? If I distribute that to the council, so you can start to understand the issues?
I gave Chris some info today, if you ever remain, so yeah, if you want to forward that on.
I'll bring that, that up. It'll be interesting, at some point, we're going to either have to support being a part of a planning process as a city that would identify projects of regional importance in the next, between now and March the 3... now and March the 31st of next year, so an amazingly accelerated timeline. But there's some thought that, well, there's all sorts of different thoughts on this, but whether or not the public would, number one, vote for an additional penny in the form of transportation SBOST here in Fulton County on a countywide basis, and whether or not there would have to be projects of regional significance in there and identified for that vote to occur, or whether or not the funding, if it existed, could be used on a local level, and whether or not the municipalities could work well enough together to find projects of regional significance after the fact. So it's going to be our, it's going to be our new normal and our new vocabulary for right after the first of the year, so I'd like to just get you some baseline information so you can get yourself up to speed on what's being proposed so that we can have a good dialogue around it.
And just to add, that is part of the, you know, there's different viewpoints, and then also, you know, some cities are looking at the, the, general consensus is to do it on a population basis to spread the money. I think at one cent, where about $48 million would come to the city of Milton, but, you know, some of the cities are thinking just projects within the city versus regional, and, I mean, my opinion is, it really needs to be regional, because you fix everything. Like Chris and I talked about, we can pave every road in every subdivision, but it doesn't really help the traffic, so it needs to be a regional area where it all works together and everything flows, so.
We did decide that every year that goes by that we don't fix the regional transportation issue, it becomes easier to get the funding, because the problem just continues to get worse. So we'll, we'll bring back a further dialogue with that. I want to bring to you tonight a request that I need to report back to the Planning Commission on. As you know, you've sent to them the text amendments that we were talking there, and I'm going to use the terms we've been using as terms of art in this rural view shed and subdivision entrance, and those text amendments that you've given to them. They did have their first meeting, as Kathy just reported, and they wanted to know if they could, and if the council would be willing to allow them to open up as well the subdivision regulations, and that right now, they're dealing with exterior things to neighborhoods. They'd like to deal with interior things as well, and I'm not, I mean, I could probably elaborate on what those interior things are, and they have, likely have to do with buffers and views and cross-sections of streets and those kind of things. But it was a request of the, or of the Planning Commission to say, would council be willing to allow us to look at both the exterior and the interior, or are we staying focused on the exterior at this point? And so I just need to report back to them what their latitude and flexibility is in doing this work and bringing back a recommendation to you that they can support.
Everybody?
I'm okay with looking at interior, interior, looking at it at the same time.
There may be, there's things they can probably do interior-wise that would all work together, and the goal that I think we all want to with the looks and feel and all that, so I'd be certainly open to.
To look skeptical.
No, no, anything, we should be able to look at anything.
Anything, right.
Okay? Whether or not we take action on it, it's something completely different, so.
It doesn't hurt to look.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, but I think, tell them, they just don't want to go off on a wild goose chase if we're not.
Well, to their credit, one of the documents was sent to them with sort of direction, and it's morphed into now we'd also like to look at this, and they just wanted to get that green light before they did a bunch of work on something, and then you said, well, we didn't ask for that.
I would just say, most subdivisions have rules that are.
Pretty restrictive.
Crazy restrictive, much worse than anything we'd ever think about using the Planning Commission for, so.
I think this would deal with future development.
You what?
I think this would deal with future development.
Yeah.
And I believe kind of the intent, some, maybe some less impact of things, correct?
That's, I would believe so.
That's what, you know.
They seem to be working in that, with that mindset, so I would believe so, yes. Does anybody have any questions for me tonight that I can answer for you? Thank you for your time, that's all we have.
Just to comment quickly, I spent Friday down at Georgia Tech, I had to pick up my professional development hours for my license, and one of the presenters there was Chris Novak, who is one of the directors with the Georgia Port Authority. Very informative, two-hour presentation about Savannah Port and what all they do down there, the extent of the economic impact that has on the entire, well, almost the entire southeastern portion of the United States. Went into detail on how their plans on expanding the port, securing more property, developing more property. Of course, the big deal down there is deepening the channel, but you got, of course, being engineering presentation, he got into some of the nitty-gritty issues on how they support everything down there as far as handling Connex boxes and ships coming in and out and everything else. He suggested that if he had four or more people that were interested in actually taking a tour of the port down there, that we get with him and he will set it up. What was going through my mind is next June, when we're down there, if that's a possibility for us to do, or some of us to do, it'd be a worthwhile trip to go through that, and might even suggest it to GMA that they may want to do something of that nature, too. Setting up an actual review of the port and going through his presentation, it was excellent.
I'd be all over that.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see. It's going to definitely change Savannah.
We'll see if we can get you scheduled.
Okay.
And I'd get you his email address.
Great. I don't know how to spell it, but I wrote down Chris Novak, so I can probably find it, but if you've got it handy, that'd be great.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd serve this, too, next week, but want to congratulate staff on the pancake breakfast success on Saturday as well.
That was great.
That was a very good job.
Yeah, that was excellent.
I'll tell you, I haven't looked at a piece of bacon since that thing.
I was going to say, any event that has 50 pounds of bacon, it's got to be good.
Sixty.
Sixty pounds.
I came home, you know, we didn't have any, I wanted to run and grab something for breakfast the next morning, so I ran up to 12 bucks to get some coffee and ended up bringing home, I don't know, that Starbucks, I guess, right? But I came home with a sausage, a sandwich that had sausage on it, which I'm just not, I don't do that, but I was like, I can't look at bacon if I had to.
But it was good, I had a piece of it.
It was really good.
It was really good.
I did mention to one of the firemen that maybe we should start doing it more often, maybe monthly, and his comment was, do y'all really hate us that much? It was a lot of work, so, but they did a great job.
And I also have to congratulate Bill and Karen on the Friends of Milton Library book sale.
I may need a please, that's for good to my car.
That was tremendous. Good job.
How much? You did quite a bit that weekend, Harry.
Okay.
Yep, and we're having another one on Wednesday, for those who missed the one on Saturday.
Oh, wow, Wednesday.
So, if you haven't seen the little barn, you need to come see the barn. It is, it's neat, you know, and book sales are so easy when all you do is open doors and put out signs and don't have to carry books.
You have to, yeah.
And don't have to carry the books around.
We'll adjourn the meeting.